This conference will now be recorded.
Again, this is just example and we like the canvas format, so I left these things on there as examples, but might want to either say, yeah, those are important to us, or we want to state them a different way, or take those off and put these ones on instead. That's a discussion that we need to have in terms of our vision. Our decision principles. This is something we can have or not have on the document. The city of Camas, their council at the time they put this together felt like, hey, you know, when we make a decision, we want to filter that decision through some key questions to keep us on track with our strategic priorities and our vision and our values. And so they intend, don't always, but intend to ask these questions when they're talking about a policy issue and looking at taking action. And then our values, they stated as our internal values. This again has a lot to do with operations, how we do things, right? We're service oriented, vision driven, partnering and collaboration are important, accountability, continuous improvement. So we can have these things on here or not, because this document is intended to be your document and your expression of the city's mission, vision, values, and key strategic priorities.
I like the, I like the format. Can you zoom out so we can see the whole thing?
Is going to be and still be able to to provide the income. Absolutely.
You may not be able to make the decision, but we can guide it. And growth, you're right, has to happen.
I want to take your altitude up just a little bit. We're, I think we're hovering between ten and fifteen thousand feet right now. And I want to take you back up to thirty to thirty-five thousand feet for just a second. And talk about when we talk about the vision, which who owns the vision? The citizens do, right? The council articulates the vision. The staff operationalize that vision, right, working with the council. And so as you think about the answer to the question, what do you want to be? Right? You need to think about a couple of things. I this, this is my opinion, right? Couple of things to think about, big areas. One is this organization, the city, when we say the city of La Center, we're really talking about two interconnected things. One is this organization. The staff, the equipment, the buildings. That's all operational, it's service delivery, right? And the other is the environment. So that's the planning stuff. The land use, what do we want to see develop here? How do we want to grow? How big do we want to get? Right? And so you need to kind of think about these two different areas because they're different tools to get there, right? The environment piece is really about your comprehensive plan, which Ethan was talking about last time. And what do you want that to be? Right? Do you want to grow out, take in more land, develop it, develop it higher densities? You know? What are the implications of that? What are the goals? You want to see more amenities, commercial amenities, that sort of thing? So that's all environment. And you, you pass that plan, but you're not going to go build the grocery store. Or the, you know, movie theater, whatever that amenity is, hey, we think this would be really cool to have in our community would boost livability.
Waterpark.
Wa- waterpark.
Disneyland.
But you provide the place for it. By looking at your map and going, you know, we think this area is useful for these types of amenities. And so we're apply this zoning code to it. And then you wait in a lot of cases for the capital investment to come in. There are some other things you can do to catalyze it, capital investment. Right? Funding the infrastructure improvements. Building the roads out, right? Incentives for development, those kinds of things catalyze that development that you want to see. So that's all environmental. The operations side is really about, you know, I want to see the grass in our parks cut more frequently than we do. I want to see the streets swept more frequently, right? So that's talking about what's the level of service that you want to see? And what are the resources needed to get there? Right? Well, you know, if you want to see the streets swept every day, right? We want them shiny and polished every single day. Brian's going to tell you, okay, well, I need three street sweepers running fourteen hours a day. That means I need six bodies to to run them, right? But if that's the goal, that's the policy, that's the vision. Then they'll tell you how to do it. They'll bring an appropriations request and then you got to figure out, well, okay. Do we cut something to create the funding for it? Do we raise revenue to make that happen? Right? So those are all the operational decisions. But they all tie back to the vision of what do you want to be? So as we talk about, you know, planning efforts and stuff, remember that that's that's the environment side of the ledger. So raising it, we were talking about raising economic profile, planning efforts, key initiatives. We have the junction plan. We have the historic town center in Timmin Landing. We've got a comp plan update. And we have a market study for the junction area that dates back to twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, that may bear some, you know, revisiting along with the junction plan itself. So those are, those are the environment tools that describe the vision of place versus the vision of service levels. Maybe that's a better way to put it, right? Place versus level of service. And then city tribal relations is the other key initiative that we have going because of the nexus between the city and the Calix Reservation. Those things are just naturally, because of the proximity, going to have an influence on each other in terms of creating place. Right? So this is where we left off last time. And we have this other column over here, if you wanted to throw another strategic priority in there, we can build that out. One observation in terms of process is we talked about strategic priorities last time. And if you'll roll the screen down, we kind of started on a key initiative. And had to go, okay, well, what's the strategic priority that relates to this key initiative? Because we were talking about form of government change, right? And so you have to go, okay, well, I got this initiative or tool, but what am I trying to do with it? And so zooming back up, I threw the term in effective governance. But that's the, that's the strategic priority. That's the, the key thing that we want to see. And that's how we would use that one, right? But there are probably some other key objectives along the lines of effective governance and initiatives that we would want to specify. So um, the other thing I want to do, if we can look at the other side of this document. So we want to work, this process is to eventually get us to where we have an updated mission statement. The vision, these terms in here, again, this is just example and we liked the canvas format. So I left these things on there as examples, but might want to either say, yeah, those are important to us. Or we want to state them a different way, or take those off and put these ones on instead. That's a discussion that we need to have in terms of our vision. Our decision principles. This is something we can have or not have on the document. The city of Camas, their council, at the time they put this together, felt like, hey, you know, when we make a decision, we want to filter that decision through some key questions to keep us on track with our strategic priorities and our vision and our values. And so they intend, don't always, but intend to ask these questions when they're talking about a policy issue and looking at taking action. And then our in, our values. They stated as our internal values. This again, has a lot to do with operations, how we do things, right? We're service oriented, vision driven. Partnering and collaboration are important, accountability, continuous improvement. So we can have these things on here or not. Because this document is intended to be your document and your expression of the city's mission, vision, values and key strategic priorities.
I like the, I like the format. Can you zoom out so we can see the whole thing? I like the format, but I think we should keep it as simply a place to start and not follow too much with the, the format necessarily that, that, or the, the language that, that Camus used. Because it's really good for them. Honestly, I don't know if it's, if it's really good for us. I think that the question that I come up with is we always things come out kind of the easiest way to, to say it and then remember it. So mission, vision, values is just how I always remember it. But I don't know if that's really the appropriate order for us. And at least at the stage that we're at, I mean, can we really come up with what our real mission statement should be if we haven't decided what our vision and our, our values are? Those, I don't know, that would take more discussion to kind of feel, figure out which one is, which ones we should work on first. But I think the thing that it's, what I feel like we're missing is input. And because we can, yeah, and we can come up with anything that we want, but I think we need that input, which is kind of what Ethan was talking about last week with the, the different surveys and, and things like that. I think we should come up with something just to kind of get the process started. Because you throw out, hey, what should our mission, vision and values be in?
Yeah.
Just, just right down what we wrote down before.
Well, I, I would say, don't feel hamstrung by the format at all.
Yeah.
Right? This is just an example and we kind of like the flow of it. So we're sort of using it, modifying it, but we can, there's no right or wrong way to do this. What you're really trying to do is answer the question, you know, why are we here and what do we do?
Right.
And what are we trying to become? And so however you want to do that is, is really.
So for me, I think at least as far as the work that we need to do is kind of get a starting point of what the values are, whether we copy somebody else's or not. But start with the values and then figure out what the vision is and then, because the mission should, should be, I like a really easy, simple, short mission statement. I've had to do a number of exercises here and there. And you can make it so long that first, nobody's going to read it. Nobody will remember it. Yeah, you know, and I talked about the city of Woodburn here a couple of meetings ago and they had a really short and simple one and.
Yeah, I have to agree. I like the sound of surveys. I, I wasn't at that meeting with Ethan, but um, getting the community involved in what they want to see on there for their values for the town that they're paying for. I think it's extremely important and valuable.
Other thoughts?
Uh, one thing I was thinking about as far as vision goes, I mean, obviously we want community input. But I mean, so many things are built off of emulation and whatnot from, you know, there's people that have done this before prior to us and examples that you can pull from and whatnot. And like, I mean, just on a minute scale, I was just thinking of like the city of Ben, like that's kind of got the outdoors feel like hometown, small town. They still, you know, at great schools, you know, seems like there's still the values there and whatnot. It's grown quite excessively, but like I said, on a very small scale, that's kind of how I picture things moving in some sense. But, you know, knowing that they got to that point, it's somehow, you know, they were able to do development in the middle district and whatever else they did. And that came some sort of process that, you know, has already been in place. And so I don't know if there's something like that that can help lead us into those types of, you know, building that vision or?
Well, I just did a simple Google search for city council mission statements. And, you know, there's a number of them that, that come up, but it was after reading a couple of those that I was like, well, again, it was just in my mind, it was mission, vision, value. So that was the order that I was thinking of it. And so, you know, I think, I think values, I think we should be able to come up with a, a starting point and then get input. And then start working towards the next one, vision. And then the mission is how do we, how do we obtain that vision? And then how do we support those, those values or meet those, those values that we set? And then each set of, each, each point needs to have the input in order to.
Yeah, the, the way I've always understood it is, you know, vision points to what you're, what direction you're going in, what you're trying to become. And the values put parameters around how you get there, how you do that. Right? So, you know, we do it through, uh, you know, we're, here's where we're going. We want community that's, you know, friendly, livable, whatever, right? You come up with what your description of your vision is for the community. And then, you know, how we do it, the, the values, the parameters around it's, you know, accountability, fiscal sustainability, responsibility. You come up with those, what are the values to us as we do that? Don't grow too fast, you know, grow fast as we can. Right? You set those parameters. So in terms of the process, so maybe, so you've got an idea, which is let's start with values. Right? And let's get some community input on what are our values as a community, right? Others have thoughts on that? Is that a place where we want to start?
I think it's a great starting point, actually.
Okay.
Right? Define your values and the mission will, will present itself.
Okay. And then, go ahead, Sean.
Oh, I agree. I was just nodding. Yes, I agree. But I think that's great. And like Casey said, get a baseline. And then we run with it with community input and go from there.
Okay. So let's talk about that process. In terms of figuring out values, how do you all envision that and going? What do you, what do you want to see in terms of process to get there?
They put us on the spot there, Jeff.
We're just spitballing stuff here, right? And so I'll, I'll throw out a few things. So you could do like a, a town hall evening. Here's the subject. This is what we want to talk about. We can set up a number of like little charrette areas around the room. So people can come in and give their input on a particular question. We could accompany that with some kind of online engagement. Right? It's not going to be scientific, but we put it out there and folks can, would do Survey Monkey or whatever.
Yeah.
And collect input that way, come back and review it. Um, and then figure out what our next step is, right? After we see that kind of input. So that's one potential approach to get the feedback and information so that you can deliberate on it. Other thoughts or ideas about how you might want to approach it?
Could we also include it in the newsletter?
Yeah.
Don't forget the reader board.
Just to try to address, everybody captures information differently. And I think, you know, I'm a good majority of folks nowadays are savvy with technology, but there's also folks that would just as soon sit down and read it and write it.
Right, but you can also include a link on that newsletter so they can go place their votes or they put their word in, yeah.
I personally like the in-person one, but.
The what?
I said I personally like the in-person one, but I guess I just.
Well, no, I mean, all of them.
Could you encompass it all together?
Yeah.
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 So I think what you would want to define, if the goal is, I'm hearing it, for the process, is to drive input.
Yeah.
Right?
Any way we can.
Some feedback and some input. And so, uh, you know, one way to do that is a physical town hall kind of a meeting. Open house or something like that. Um, open up a survey and keep it open for a couple of weeks during that same period of time that you're going to have that town hall or open house meeting, uh, promote through the newsletter.
I was just going to ask, how do we promote something like that, right? How do you drive interest in, hey, tell us what your values are for the city of La Center? So how, how do you promote something like that?
Well, maybe.
Coupons.
Facebook.
I mean, the way I look at it, it's like we're all, I mean, the five of us are statistically a sample of the larger population. That's why we're voted in and, and our values and what we ran on, our constituents voted for us because of those reasons. And so they're in alignment in a lot of ways for those folks, right? But maybe something like where we each come up with our own, uh, value. So we have five values and we kind of ask them, hey, position of Melissa Fox, this is what I think is of, you know, what my thinker value. And then they can maybe pick a top couple, right? See which one means the most to them or something to try to get them like, not competition, not like that. But I just mean to give them five choices and say, hey, these came from the individual council members that you voted in. And this is what they think, which one do you align with the most? And kind of, because if you ask them, I mean, they're going to sit there like, I'm not going to answer this because it's too much, right? It's like, we have to give them parameters. And I think giving them five choices of options, I think.
Give some options.
Pick the top two or three things that you believe in the most out of the five that we think are important to us. Just an idea.
So, so the town hall is an interesting idea, right? Because you want to hear people. But you want to hear people coming in person. We have a hard time filling seats for. Right? So actually, Maria and Brian, do, do you guys get a lot of responses and anything that you guys send out that newsletter that has maybe like a survey or questions? Do people just start calling you or emailing you or?
I can chime in on that a little bit. So we did a parks survey recently and got close to two hundred responses, which I thought was pretty good. Another option that I think's been talked about and, and maybe could help with this effort is that community survey that's been discussed a couple of times and that would be, you know, some, maybe some other data that you could put in and kind of lean the community's feelings. But that would actually be a statistically significant sampling versus, you know, like Mr. Swanson mentioned, when you do like a Survey Monkey or something like that, it's kind of just whoever happens to, you know, click on it. And, and so maybe you're not getting a complete representation. So, um, you know, that's another avenue we could look at to gather some data on this.
It, it just seems more feasible, right? Because if we ever have a hard time filling the council chamber for a council meeting, I, I just wondering how full it's going to get for a values.
Yeah, I know, I thought about that too. But I also think that sometimes those surveys, when they're sent out, there's like, I remember looking at the parks one, I'm like, there's in my opinion, and I run a company, I have, I work with clients, I work with the other side and trying to get them to understand the process of what I'm getting, trying to get them to answer, right? And so it's like, there's too many boxes of information to fill in, right? As a parent, as a whatever, I got two point five seconds to give, you know, you in the middle of dinner or whatever to maybe fill out your survey. And so maybe making it multiple choice, like all the way through that's what I'm talking about bringing up like, hey, here's a value point. What's the most value, you know, what do you find the highest value? And people will vote and pick throughout those things. So maybe you can get more people to respond and instead of getting a bunch of responses of these big paragraphs we got to read and then do well with it. I mean, nothing, because we can't, I mean, does that make sense? Just make it specific and have them do a multiple choice and get actual real say, okay, these were statistically the highest points that people came. You know, it's about adjectives, right? We're describing things about our town with values and, you know.
So a question back to you, Jeff, is this pretty common for councils to go through with mission statements? You've been around different cities. I mean, do they spend hours upon hours deciding what the mission statement is going to be?
It varies, right? Because some have spent a lot of time on it in the past and it's fairly dialed in. And so sometimes it's just a cursory review, change a word or two and then go forward. Watch Shugal, uh, I was involved in one with them a few years back and that's basically what it was. Some are much more exhaustive, like, hey, we haven't touched this in twenty years. And lots changed in twenty years.
Boy, I definitely think it's important that we, you know, go through with this process. But maybe in a timely fashion as well, you know, just to, I mean, I think we can kind of expedite things is, you know, maybe by working online or whatever, communicating that way sometimes too. And it's, I mean, obviously it's great to be in person so we can talk through some of this, but, um, yeah, I, I mean, I guess bouncing off of what Tom asked.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
So the other question you need to think about, if you're going to put a survey out or you're seeking input, who are you seeking input from?
Residents.
Just residents?
Businesses.
Businesses, yeah.
Okay. Residents, businesses, because the reason I ask that is, so what Brian's talking about is a very rigorous statistically significant survey method. Where they look at your addresses and they randomly send a number of, you know, surveys to those addresses. And people can respond online or they could fill out a paper form and send it back in a posted prepaid envelope, right? If we did some, that's expensive. If we did something that's, you know, hey, let's throw a Survey Monkey thing together and put it out there. Then it becomes challenging to validate who's, who you're getting responses from. Right? Because it could be somebody that's like, well, yeah, I live in La Center, but you pulled up their address. They live outside of La Center, you know, they're not a voter in the city. So if you're wanting, if the goal is to hear from city residents, businesses, voters, right? You're drawing a tight circle around the group you want to hear from. Then the method you use to get the input might have some noise in it. And it may not be a significant issue at all, right? Because I wouldn't expect, uh, knowing what I know about the area, that the opinions of those inside the city about topics like this are going to vary very, you know, substantially from people who live just outside the city. Other communities have thought about it in terms of live, work and play, right? For some people who live here, some people who work here, some people who play here, some do, you know, combination of two of those things, some do all three. And so, you know, if we do the statistically significant sampling method, then we're not hearing necessarily from the ones who work and play here, but don't live here. But they spend their money and their time here, right? So you have to kind of decide who do we want to hear from? And then use, you know, build the tool accordingly. The other thing I think we should do, so if we're going to start with values, maybe let's go back out in terms of altitude again, right? Because values is one part of this process. We also want to define our vision. We want to define our mission statement. And the goal is to get to these strategic priorities. Because here's where you really give direction to staff. And in terms of building a budget, because once you get down to these key initiatives, you know, Marie and Brian are over here thinking, okay, well, I've got some ideas about these initiatives. You know, I need a body or I need a, you know, piece of equipment or whatever it is. And so those are going to come, initiatives generally mean budget decision packages. Like we're changing something significant, changing level of service. But we have to start with that high level stuff and work our way down to it. But that's the tie between these sort of high altitude ethereal discussions and actually like signing a check and putting services on, on the street, right? All these steps in between is how you get there. So if we start with, uh, our values, then we probably need to like figure out, okay, once we have that information, then what do we want to talk about next? And how do we want to talk about that? Right? So we do values as a module, then what's the next module and how do we approach that module? Right?
So like, are you saying like as far as like transition into vision?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If, if vision is the next thing that you want to talk about after values, then what's that process look like to get to a vision? And then after that, is it mission?
Yeah, I mean, I guess from your professional standpoint, does there, I mean, you've obviously done this before. Does this process work to go to change the direction of things? I mean, I think what Casey said was a hundred percent valid. But does it, in your knowledge, does that work to develop the end goal?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, like I said, there's no, you know, cookie cutter, out of the box way to do this. There are, you know, sort of the standard approach that a, some consultant will take you through or you do yourselves as an organization. But the processes tend to be as unique as the number of communities or organizations that engage in this process to figure out the answer to those key questions of who are we, where are we going, how are we going to get there?
Okay, each also write our own and then put them together somehow. And then just cut, paste, go paste, go, okay. This is it. That's another option.
You could take another communities and just go, yeah, it sounds.
Yeah, that's a little boring. I don't want total plagiarism.
It's, it's really, you know, whatever you all want to do. But this is, you know, this is your document, this is your statement. And so whatever you need to do, whatever process you need to engage in to own it is up to you.
I mean, any council, sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, any council in the future can just keep changing it, right? So technically this could be a mission statement for four years. So why spend a bunch of money, time and focus when we could just be, hey, do a survey, do all this, come back when we could say, hey, what's, what's the?
But if you develop something of substance, then it should last.
Well, I agree, but because people have power, they. Well, I agree, but because people have power, they will sometimes like to take that just to use it for fun, so.
She is correct.
It's just.
Oh, I'm not saying that she's not, but four years down the road, somebody else might come in.
Yeah, just because they want to make it their own if they can. So I mean, the reality is, you know, I'm almost like, do we, we're dealing with the survey.
Cities change, values change, missions change.
But generally speaking, these kinds of documents come out and say, we want to have a, we want to build and sustain a beautiful place. So you're not going to have somebody run for election.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
And so I'm running on the dump.
We are not family friendly, we are not about.
Get the thumbs off the council and we're going to change this, right? Because of different vision.
My point being that our mission statement hasn't changed since 196.
I know, but it's silly wordy and it's not that, I mean, it could be a little bit more poetic.
Well, I think, I think.
Can you read that out loud, Jeff?
Sure, it says.
Well, I just mean it could flow better. I mean, gosh, I'm a writer, so yeah, for me, I'm like.
And, and here's the other nuance to this, right? Is this, this statement says the mission of the City of La Center Council, right? And so we want to talk about, of the City of La Center, right? Not just the council, is to represent the public interest of the citizens of La Center. So if you're parsing out particular things of substance here, you would say, okay, represent the public interest is a key part of that phrase, right? Balancing the needs of our commercial and residential community and enhancing the quality of our park system and infrastructure through professional planning and maintenance. There's a lot there, right? But it sounds like kind of balancing quality of life, which is one of the things you said, about balancing growth and livability consistent with values. In not as many words.
Little update.
Little updates inward, yeah, yeah.
So how does, kind of going back to what our form of, of government is, how does our role as the council, I guess, split up? Thinking of it in terms of, we're the legislative branch of the city and then the, there's the executive branch or the administrative branch, which, to me, it seems like this is, this is something that's broad enough for us to be able to take on as a project with input and everything else. And then that's what is going to guide the executive branch to implement and carry out is that on target?
That's, that's pretty on target, yeah. Yeah, it comes down to the difference between policy and administration, right? Because policy really is that high level, here's what, here's the kind of community we want to have or develop into, right? And so here are some more specifics around that vision. And then there starts to get to be this interplay between the policymaking side and the administrative side, right? Because at the end of the day, the administrative side of the government has to figure out, okay, well, how do we, how do we take this direction and implement? How do, what does this mean in terms of services on the street? So you want to have that give and take, that feedback, you know, you want your attorney to tell you, you can't do that legally, right? Give you that kind of feedback. Or, you know, Brian Cass can't, you know.
I need to say it.
Change the laws of physics on certain things, right? So on certain things you can, but on certain things you cannot. So you want to have that input, like if part of your vision is, you know, flying cars, Brian might have an opinion about that, right? For traffic safety, traffic management, Chief Richardson might have an opinion about enforcement, right, of, of those kinds of things. So having that sort of interplay between the policy and the administration is really critical, right? Because they're going to come back and they're going to say, well, you know, we, we got some clear direction from you, we went out to figure out how to implement it and here are your options. And it may mean we have to tweak our vision a little bit.
So can we put, we can't put, you know, street party every Friday on there? I'm just teasing, like poor street party, you know? I'm just teasing, like obviously saying, everything affects everything else is what I'm saying. It'd have to be cleaned up, you'd need this, you'd have to, just because you want that doesn't mean, it doesn't come ahead, you know? It affects everything, all the process.
So at the highest level of that example, you would say, we really want more community festivals, opportunities for our citizens to meet and greet and be together and be in community.
Yeah, close out Fourth Street.
And so why don't we do these types of things, which are more specific initiatives or objectives related to, to that, right? And then getting it down to more and more finite detail, yeah.
You can have a full beer garden out there on Fourth Street, just shut it off and open it up to vendors and we can have everybody in the street and make our, I think that'd be awesome, make some money for the city and what?
Yeah, and then the administrative side of that is, you know, Brian and Maria and Bob are going to come to you and say, okay, so great vision, right? Here are some challenges related to it.
Yeah.
Here are some options or alternatives, right? So that's where that comes from. And oh, by the way, it's going to cost, you know, X number of dollars to do this and that sort of thing. So values is where we'll start. I think if you all want to, you know, do some thinking about this, send me emails about your thoughts, I can start kind of mapping out a process.
Can you get some pricing together and stuff for surveys and such or?
Yeah.
So the kind of, that can also help drive things as well.
Yeah, I mean, Survey Monkey's pretty, pretty cheap.
Yeah, well, the mailers aren't.
The one Brian's talking about runs around 15,000 to 20,000.
Yes.
Right, so, and there's probably some things in between. Okay, so we'll start mapping out that values piece, then the vision module, then mission statement, and then strategy. We'll kind of do it in that sequence, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll work on putting that together. It is now 6:24. We want to take five minutes and, okay, back to you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you very much, Jeff, for walking us all through that. Good dialogue. We will take a short break and come back for our regular meeting at 6:30. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming. I'm going to call the regular city council meeting for Wednesday, March 22nd, 2023 to order. Clerk, can you call, roll call?
Councilmember Fox?
Present.
Councilmember Casper?
Here.
Councilmember Boyle?
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin?
Here.
Mayor Protem Servini?
Present.
Mayor Thornton?
Absent excuse. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and for the people with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I got us out of order there. So we'll jump right into citizens' public comment. Clerk, can you call up the public comments from the audience, please? Welcome.
My name is Mike, I live at 532 East Stone Creek Drive. And the reason I'm up here today is because last year during the summer, for some reason, we had a couple of instances with city maintenance vehicles, like the big riding lawnmower going over the corner of our property. We are the corner house, we're Stone Creek and Fifth Street intersect. So we were, I guess you'd call it the northwest corner there. And so we own all the way to the sidewalk and a lot of times we do landscaping all the way to the end. And I went out last year only to find at the tail end of a little big riding mower gone over the whole corner and just kind of plowed over a lot of that. And when I got the guy to take his ear thing off, he just said it's on our list. And unfortunately, shortly after that, over the last year, I got like 40 grand surgery. So I didn't have time to kind of get in here sooner to find out what's going on, but I knew it was spring, that's probably going to be reoccurring more outdoor maintenance. And we would kind of prefer that city vehicles, at least without talking to us first, were not kind of going over our property, because we're not sure why that occurs or, you know, what the thought process is. But we, we'd rather be notified according to that, because we do plan to do some landscaping this year and just don't want to see any more of that going on.
Okay, we'll let Brian Cass, our Public Works Director, work with you on that.
Okay. All right. We might always mind it happening, but we'd rather have it worked out in advance.
Okay, thank you.
Could you turn the volume on? Does she hear a lot louder?
Okay, we'll encourage people to take the mic out of the holder.
Al Filla, 152 West 15th Street. Hey, we got coffee here tonight. Wow, good job.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alex.
Great job. Boy, the grand opening, try that pizza up there. Hey, it's delicious. What was that, bowling pizza? Oh, now the important stuff. Okay, now I'm here, you know, they post all the public comments and everything out there on that board out there. That, that's a really poor place to put that. It caught, there's condensation inside, sometimes you can't read it. You know, I mean, we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars redoing this thing and we couldn't put it, you know, someplace else. You, you have to walk off the sidewalk to get up there to read it. You know, I know it's awful far down my list, but I'm not there. Thank you and God bless America.
Thank you, Al.
Dennis Hill, 1316 West Alder Place. I sat in on the, just greetings to council and, and staff. I sat in on the workshop earlier today. I thought it was a good job. I think there's a lot to be taken care of. One of the things that I came away with though, that I would like to just throw out there for the council to consider, you talked about wanting to work on values first, I think that's great. But you know, here's the thing, there's so many ways to go out there and try to get input. One of the key things I think is we need to come up with a clear and understandable definition of what do we mean by values? If we're not, if we don't put something together that's really understandable, you're going to get stuff all over the map and it's not going to be what you're looking for. So I think you need to work a little bit toward, before you get that underway too far, is really, are you, are you all clear on what you consider a value? So that that can be transmitted to our citizens, so if they So if they respond to a questionnaire or a survey, you're on the same page. You're, you're on the same thing. You're going to get, you're going to hopefully get the answers that you're looking for. So just a, a comment and a thought to think about, a, a good definition of what is, what do we mean by values? Thank you.
Thank you.
God bless America.
Emily?
Hello, my, sorry.
Please use the mic.
My name is Emily Hancock, and I live at 518 East 17th Circle. I'm here today representing a large body of citizens who are concerned about the house in the residential professional zone of downtown La Center that has multiple large swastikas spray painted on its side, as well as a German Nazi Kriegs Marine War flag flying in the yard. The inhabitants of this house are notorious for harassing their neighbors and displaying obscene signs and flags with the intent to intimidate and offend. It is my understanding that the police have been called multiple times about the swastika imagery, but have refused to take any action citing free speech. And while free speech does technically protect the right to fly a swastika flag on one's private property, the swastika graffiti does appear to be against municipal code. Specifically, Code 8.55.030, duty to maintain property, no owner of any real property or structure, including the owner of a vacant lot, shall maintain or allow to be maintained any of the following conditions: visible from any public street or alley, or from any other property, graffiti or signs not in compliance with the La Center Municipal Code on the exterior of any building, fence, or other structure. As well as Code 8.60.020, sign regulations applicability prohibited signs, signs which are public or private nuisances, nuisance meaning any condition or use of property that annoys, injures, or endangers the safety, health, comfort, or repose of the public. Additionally, it appears that signage such as this would require a permit, since it's visible from the public right of way and would be considered a permanent sign under the municipal code. I sincerely doubt that a permit would have been successfully acquired from the city for this type of signage, meaning that the graffiti is almost certainly violating city code by not having a permit. There is, however, a larger issue at hand. It is my understanding that the city has been made aware of this situation repeatedly, yet has done nothing about it. Many citizens are under the impression that the city has chosen to do nothing about this, because the mayor and city council are in alignment with such anti-Semitic values and condone Nazism in La Center. We hope that you prove to us this is not the case. But if that is what's happening here, we will ensure that citizens are made aware of what our local government stands for and will continue our activism until an appropriate resolution for this matter can be reached. Right now, with the expansion of La Center, we must make a choice about whether or not we will allow the city to be a safe haven for Nazis and Nazi sympathizers. To allow these swastikas to remain up despite them being in violation of municipal code would be incredibly damaging to the identity and reputation of La Center, and would put into question the city's image as a safe and desirable place to live. We ask that our representatives, that as our, as our representatives, you act now and stand against this anti-Semitic display, because hate and antisemitism and white supremacy should have no place in La Center.
Excellent presentation. Thank you.
One thing I'm just going to say, I don't think that any of us are in alliance with antisemitism.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, not sure where you got your information, but that's completely false.
Yes. Um, we're, Maria and Brian will probably have comments.
Thank you for bringing up that.
I think our city attorney has a response.
Yeah, I was going to do in my attorney report, but I can, I can, I don't know if there's anybody else who's going to speak to this issue. I'll wait till I hear from everybody.
No, I, I haven't signed up, but I give the response, will you have this?
Yeah. No, you know, Emily, thank you for your thoughtful and well-researched comments. That kind of behavior is despicable. It's disgusting. There are, you're not going to like what I have to say. Okay, I'll just be frank. And my advice to the city has been not to take action on this situation. And there, there is a good legal reason for it, at least I think there is. There's some U.S. Supreme Court cases and a Washington Supreme Court case that are really on point. I'll start with the Washington Supreme Court case, and that's a case of the Residential Action Council versus the Seattle Housing Authority. And in this case, it was a property, a housing project, where, you know, units were rented to people, and people were putting signs on their doors. And some included swastikas, some included nude, you know, photographs, things that normal people would find objectionable. And the Housing Authority adopted a rule that said, okay, no signs, you know, no signs of any nature. So it was content neutral, which is important when you are talking about the regulation of speech, because you can't regulate speech based on the content of the speech. You know, that's a violation of the First Amendment. Even though we don't like your speech, we can't regulate it just because we don't like it, you know, because then who, what other speech are we going to say you can't engage in? So anyway, with the Housing Authority, that, that went up to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court affirmed the trial court, which said that that regulation was unconstitutional. And they relied on a U.S. Supreme Court case, which was the City of Ladue versus Galeo, which was another case involving residential signs. And in that Supreme Court case, I'm going to quote some passages from it, so that you get the context of where the court was coming from. But in that case, it was, again, it was a ban on residential signs. And the Supreme Court made some of the comments, including, residential signs are a means of communication that is venerable, unique, and important. They reflect and animate, animate change in the life of a community. These signs reach neighbors and audience that could not be reached nearly by other means. Displaying a sign from one's own residence often carries a message quite distinct from placing the same sign someplace else. In addition, the course referred to special respect for the individual liberty in the home, a principle that has special resonance when governing, when government seeks to constrain a person's ability to speak there. It's a unique medium. Displaying a sign from one's own residence carries a message quite distinct from placing on somebody else's property. Okay, I already said that. So U.S. Supreme Court found a special protection for displaying a sign on your own residence. And, and in the case, in the Seattle case, that also applied too. Well, you didn't own the housing project, but you rented it, so that's your residence, and you've got that protection to speak there. And then you get to another U.S. Supreme Court case, which was Reed versus Gilbert, which was a case, pretty recent, that really laid down the law on, you cannot regulate signs in a manner that you have to refer to the content of the sign to know if the regulation applies or not. So if you have to read the sign to know if the regulation applies, it's, it's content-driven, and strict scrutiny applies, and it's very difficult to defend that regulation or, or an action take, taken based on the regulation. So in this instance, in my analysis, there were, there are two primary drivers involved in the advice that I gave the city. One was, we're talking about, you know, a residential sign. You say, well, maybe this isn't a sign, maybe it's just graffiti. I'll talk about graffiti for a second, but let's just deal with the signage. So, you know, the special protection for doing this on your own residence has to be recognized. And then the second thing is, why are we doing this? Why would we be taking this action? And it's clearly content-driven. It's, we don't like the message, and that's why we're taking the action. And you're just going to be setting yourself up for a civil lawsuit liability in doing so. And so my advice, you know, and I don't like giving it all the time, but I, I have to tell you what you need to hear, not what you want to hear. That's my job. And in this instance, my job is saying, don't take the code action on this, because you're doing it because of the message that we don't like.
And I'm guessing it's been researched that it is their primary residence, like they own it.
You know.
And they're not actually just renting the property, and maybe there's a loophole. I mean, has that been researched? I'm, maybe you can't even say that. I don't know. You just look up the address and property information, but I'm just saying, is that the one loophole, as if the person who actually owned the property said, I don't want this, you have to take it down? That's what I'm saying.
Well, that person who owns a home, they're renting it, somebody in the renter has put that up.
Uh huh.
They should exercise their right as the landlord.
Well, right, that's what I'm saying. It sounds like the only loophole, is what I'm saying, with this particular property, because obviously it's not just them saying this, it's on Facebook families, it's been continuous. Do we know for sure if it is their own property? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
It is.
Oh, it is. Okay, thank you. I assumed it was, but at this point, you would have figured that out, but yeah.
So you want to, there, so let me say one thing. So we have a procedure here, right? And, and you make public comment, and, and Emily, you've made one, you, you get one shot. But I'll be here after the meeting, and if you want to talk, I'll be happy to talk to you, or anybody else.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Link. I live at 1206 East Pioneer Loop. I was just going to ask about it, like, being graffiti, first of all, you know, that part?
Yep. Go ahead.
Oh, well, and then the second part that I was wondering about is, how is it still defendable if it's like hate speech? I totally understand, you know, like, First Amendment, you're able to have free speech, but I just don't understand when it's like directly trying to, you know, hurt people, or like, cause harm. How is that protected? You know, because I thought freedom of speech was supposed to be unless it's hurting someone else, if that makes sense.
Okay, I can, I'll talk about both those things.
Cool, okay, thank you.
So let me, I, thank you for reminding me to talk about graffiti. Our code doesn't define graffiti, but I've looked, you know, Google, I've looked at other municipal codes, I've looked at the state statutes, and graffiti is almost universally described as, you know, painting or marking up public property or property of another. If it's your own property, it's not graffiti. But, you know, we could, it's like a sign.
Right.
Okay. So hurtful speech? You know, it's true, not all speech is protected. You can't, in a crowded movie theater, yell fire, right? Because, I mean, that creates an imminent danger of harm. Fighting words are not protected. Pornography is not protected. But when you talk about, well, this is hurtful, and it is, but we couldn't show evidence of this speech causing, you know, fights. The imminent, it has to be really, not just hurt feelings, or hurt viewpoints, or hurt values. It's got to be physical harm that's imminent, in order to justify the regulation. And that's, you know, that's the fire in the movie theater example, so.
Thank you, Bronson. Sir, did you submit a card? Okay. Oh, no, I was just asking. Come on up and introduce yourself and provide your address.
My name is Bill Soul. The house in discussion is 630 Dogwood, which is my father's address. And I see, as I understand it, there's a whole bunch of stuff that is really being blown out of proportion in this thing. I can tell you where it came from about seven years ago, when they put the new sidewalk in, in front of my father's house. It rendered his driveway unusable without dragging. We worked with the city engineer, I believe his name was Jeff Sarvis. I could be wrong on that. It's a long time ago. I don't remember. So after dealing with the engineer and trying to get satisfaction on it, nothing ever happened. And that's when my father, out of frustration, is bowing his back and standing up and saying, I'm not being heard. Apparently, he's being heard now, and it's being taken in all out of context and in the wrong way. So basically, if somebody would, from the city engineer, would in good faith work with him to get a seven-year problem that should have been dealt with, taken care of, I'm sure this would all go away. That's my, what I see and what I know from talking to my dad. It's out of pure frustration, because the city will not fix his street. They screwed up his driveway, and now they put in other houses behind him, and he has drainage issues, water running down the driveway, wiped it out. I mean, all he wants is to be heard. He's lived in this city for 85 years. You people talk about pride in the city. He's lived here for 85 years, and he's being kicked to the curb, not being listened to. I mean, is that the kind of city we want, to treat our old residents like they don't matter anymore? I guess that, that puts my point across. Like I said, it's being taken way out of context, and if the city engineers would fix his street and his corner and his ditch, this would be a non-issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Are there any callers?
There are.
There are? There are. Okay. The callers that are on the line, please remember to press star six to unmute yourselves, to speak and introduce yourself and provide your address before your comments. Welcome. Callers, can you press star six and unmute yourselves to speak?
Can you hear me?
We can now.
Okay. My name's Lisa Boysher, 3505 Northwest 417th Street in Woodland. I wanted to address the council tonight about the Cardi Hill Rock Quarry Request for a Surface Mining Overlay on 46 acres of a 76-acre parcel on the corner of Cardi Hill and Northwest 402nd in Woodland. I addressed the Woodland City Council Monday night and the Clark County Commissioners last night. The Woodland City Council, the city director, and the Woodland Chamber of Commerce have already written letters of concern over the project. This is going to impact all of Woodland in both counties, as well as neighboring La Center and visitors to the area. The quarry would be approximately 700 feet from the Lewis River, less than 1,500 feet from the city limits of Woodland, and less than four and a half miles from downtown La Center. A Colombian article dated 16 December 2022 stated that Clark County Planning Commission voted three to two against recommending the overlay. With that close of a vote, I wanted to be sure all of you know how it will adversely impact area residents. That article quoted the Commissioner Halber when he stated that the overlay needed to be approved before the concerns can be addressed. His words, "I think the process is that the overlay needs to be put into place, and then they can get the plan put together." Let me repeat that. He said, "I think the process is the overlay needs to be put into place, and then they can put the plan together." The overlay application was written as a non-project action, so none of the potential adverse impacts needed to be addressed. I built a home on Clark County in Woodland two years ago. The permit center did not give me a permit and then allow me to do the geotechnical study, the stormwater, et cetera, and prove that I was not impacting the environment. I'm not sure why this would be any different, or why it should be. They don't have to prove the water runoff would not impact the seasonal stream on their property or the flow to Lewis River. They don't have to prove that the noise would not impact Woodland resident, or La Center residents. Or it would impact the IFI Bridge over North Fork of Lewis River. As we all know, there's already problems, and the trucks have to use the center lane. According to their application, they will, they will be working 260 days per year, which would only give us 105 days of peace and quiet. So I'm hopeful that So I'm hopeful that if your council has not yet written to the Clark County Commissioners a letter of concern, I beg you do that as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other callers? Okay. Do we have any public comments to be read into the minutes?
We do not.
Before we move on, Maria, can we make sure we get something set up with the city and Mr. Soul to maybe talk about a solution moving forward?
Yeah, we can put together some information on the background of that. We'll do a little bit of research and can brief the council on sort of the history of that issue and then talk about how we move forward.
Thank you.
I know you're coming to clean that up, Brian, so thank you for all that.
Takes us to the consent agenda. If there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move?
Second.
Motion and a second to approving the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried unanimously. Presentations and proclamations. We'll begin with Mr. Brian Cast introducing our two new employees this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Good evening, council and citizens. I am extremely excited to be able to introduce two new supervisors in the public works arena here. First, we have Amy Roberts Santa Stevens. She comes to us from the city of Portland, where she was Division Manager for the Bridge Tunnel Sidewalk and Street Cleaning Division. She has over 20 years of experience in both the private and public arena and operations management. She started with us on the first of this month, and she's already really jumped into looking at our, updating our safety protocols. We have a new asset management and work order system that I've mentioned to you in the past, and she's dug into that. And just this afternoon, we got some data out of that, so we can start to track how long it's taking us to complete work and, you know, cycles and that sort of data that we can then bring to the council as we need, you know, potentially additional staffing or just to see what kind of work's taking place in the city and what our citizens are reporting to us. So very excited to have Amy here. I promised them both I wouldn't make them get up and speak, so I will switch over to Jay now. Yeah, but she can wave at least so you know who you're seeing, what you see around. So she is leading the public works crew, so the five employees will be under her, reporting to her, and then she'll be reporting to me. And we're very excited to have her here. Feel that both her and Jay, who I'll introduce here in a sec, will bring a very high level of professionalism and organization to our city here. So secondarily, I want to introduce Jay Favor. Why don't you wave here since I forgot that? Jay is a Class Four wastewater operator in Washington and in several other states. He also holds his Water Distribution Manager accreditation. He has over 27 years in the water and wastewater industry, most recently out of Illinois. But he's also worked here in the Pacific Northwest as well. He started on the 15th. He already has a framework put together for training and growing operators in training so that we can grow our own staff for the treatment plant versus trying to be in the bidding war with all of the other organizations. It's a high in-demand career field and will continue to be. So very excited to have him here as well.
Well, welcome, Amy and Jay. We're excited to have you. Exciting news. All right, we do have a proclamation this evening, and I will be reading it. Thank you, Maria, for putting it in large print. Proclamation for National Telecommunicators Week, April 9th through the 15th, 2023. Whereas the Clark Regional Emergency Services Agency, CRESSA, 911 Communication Center is the initial point of contact for individuals in crisis with the Life and Property Saving Emergency Response Network. And whereas trained professional 911 dispatchers work as a team evaluating information and initiating the correct response of personnel and equipment resources commensurate with the location and nature of the emergency. And whereas high degrees of communication skills are employed to save lives by giving emergency instructions, including first aid and pre-arrival information to those in crisis while help is in response. And whereas a team effort is provided to field response paramedics, firefighters, and law enforcement officers in monitoring, channeling, and directing vital communications during emergency operations. And whereas skilled 911 dispatchers function as a logistical resource databank to provide appropriate support personnel and equipment resources as may be requested by the on-scene emergency responders at any incident in a timely manner. Now, therefore, I, Elizabeth Servini, Mayor Protem of Le Center, to hereby proclaim April 9th through 15th, 2023, as National Telecommunicators Week and encourage all citizens to join in this observance. Am I correct? We don't have to vote on that?
No.
Thank you. Brings us to the mayor's report, and I'd like to thank each and every one of you who came out for the podunk ribbon cutting. It was great to see the faces and the people and welcome a new business to the community. It's a great addition, and we're excited for them. Lions Club will be hosting your Easter egg hunt and breakfast on Saturday, April 8th, at the Le Center High School. Breakfast starts at 8:00 a.m., and the Easter egg hunt will start at 10:00 a.m. A lot of work goes into that. And I would like to remind everybody that we've got the blood drive next Tuesday afternoon. You can sign up online or by contacting Desi here at City Hall. There is a blood shortage in the area and the hospitals, so encourage people that can to donate. I'd also like to bring up, there are four positions on the Commission on Aging. And so it would be great if we could get a representative from the Le Center community to participate. It helps guide the county with their aging readiness plan. So if you know anyone that would be interested, contact C Hall. And that's all I have for the mayor's report. I'll move to the attorney's report, and that will be presented by our city attorney, Bronson Parton.
Thank you. Well, like a bad penny, it's back.
Oh, no.
No, it's not.
Yeah. Of course, you know, I'm talking about Riverside Estates. Yep. And the attorney for the earthmoving company that had a lien on certain city-owned tracks has filed, you know, and we got the judge to approve a sale of those tracks back to the city, free and clear of any encumbrances. And that sale took place. And then the attorney for this earthmoving company has now filed a motion for the court to reconsider the decision to allow the sale free and clear. And so I've responded and pointed out the number of times that we've explained the reasons why the sale could take place. So this would be the fourth time that I've explained it. And I think for the first time in my legal career, I've asked the court to impose sanctions against the attorney personally who brought the motion so that the city's cost in defending this ridiculous repeat, repeat, repeat isn't borne by the city. So courts are very reluctant to impose those kinds of sanctions. But in this case, it's just beyond the pale. So this kind of a motion, you're not even supposed to get a hearing on the motion for reconsideration unless the judge gives a green light, which is unusual, because every other motion, you just side on the docket and you have a hearing. This attorney didn't even know the process. He just cited it on for a hearing without permission. And the judge's judicial assistant sent out a pretty pointed email saying there won't be a hearing. Follow the process. So I sent the judge a letter and a copy of my response that was filed. Just said, you know, just so you have a working copy of this, you know, the city's position. Here it is. Hearing or no hearing, I hope we get sanctions imposed on this person. So.
What do you expect to hear anything about that, Bronson?
Trying to guess what a judge is going to make a decision. It's a losing proposition. You know, and in this case, the judge, this case got assigned to a different judge in January than the judge who approved the sale, because they just changed the assignments of cases in the court. So she might kick it back to the judge who originally heard it. I think that's probably what she should do. So wild guess, a month. Yeah.
And then once that's done, Riverside Estates has been put to bed, right?
Well.
Never say never.
Almost. There's, now that you've asked, LGI, who is the home builder for Phase One, has asked the court to modify the final plat that was approved for Phase Two to require the homeowners in Phase Two to share the maintenance costs of the stormwater tracks and open space tracks along with the homeowners in Phase One. And they've also asked the court to require the receiver to do landscaping on two open space tracks. And I don't have an issue with either of those requests, but a final plat amendment is not how you do it. So I've just, I've filed a response saying what they're asking for is okay, but the way they want you to do it, a final plat is just, it's a map of a subdivision. It's not a condition of approval. It's not a condition imposed on the land use development. It's a map, and it says, here's the lots, here's the streets, here's the open space tracks, et cetera. So they're going about it the wrong way. What they should be asking for is homeowner association covenants, conditions, and restrictions. CCNRs talk about who's responsible for maintaining. The Age Away owns the open spaces and the, these are private stormwater facilities. So we have easements over them, but they should, they should be addressing this in the CCNRs.
Extremely frustrating, you know. I'm wondering how much thou, or how many thousands this has cost the city over the years? You know, just in attorney fees alone.
Yeah.
And there's no recouping that money. So, yeah, hopefully, we can put it, put this to rest soon.
Soon.
Good luck.
Yeah. And then they're going to fight over the money. So, you know, but, but we don't have a dog in that fight.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
We can't get some of that money for us?
Do you have any positive news?
That's it, Mary.
Perfect. Thank you, Bronson. Brings us to council comments, and we'll begin with Councilmember Fox.
Hello. Good evening. Good to see everyone here. Some new faces. Don't have a whole lot to say tonight. Just happy to be here, happy to hear new citizens speaking up about their concerns. Obviously, I know it can be super frustrating with government and so many layers and so many codes and definitions, and when there's a lot of emotion involved, it's just like, you know, it's enough to just make you want to take action and do things, you know, your own way sometimes if you can't use the government to support you. So it makes you kind of think of other ways. But I think right now, hopefully, if we can be patient and listen to both sides, I think there's always two sides, not that saying that that's the right answer in this situation, because I don't believe it is. But, you know, hopefully, now with the city having more information, we can make some, you know, real progress moving forward with that. And at least there looks like something, a solution potentially, right? So that's nice, instead of just having somebody who's digging their heels in the ground and, you know, there, it doesn't matter what you do. So hopefully, we can have a good solution there. I was going to say a happy hello to Jay and Amy for joining the Le Center team, but it looks like they're gone now. What's up?
I turned them loose.
I know. I saw that. I was like, oh, they don't want to stay for their first meeting.
Six in the morning.
I figured. I was like, they're probably doing long trainings. Yeah, totally. I totally get it. But yeah, super excited to have some really talented folks in, in our town and supporting us as we approach spring. Beautiful time. Lots of kids out on the road playing basketball, you know, just on their bikes and stuff. Let's just be mindful, you know, using the crosswalks with the buttons, get those lights going, you know, just be mindful. And yeah, other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Casper.
Yeah, good evening. I really appreciate the fact that a lot of people have showed up tonight to speak on different things. I think it's, it's really important for us to hear. You know, some of the messages are disappointing. You know, I want to echo what, what other people said earlier tonight that, that because there was some difficulty in action doesn't mean that there's any support or condoning of, of any actions. You know, two, two of the most frustrating things that there are out there, I think, are the court systems and, and people. I think being disappointed in both of them is very common anymore, you know. Try not to say too many personal feelings during a public meeting, but, you know, sometimes the courts are disappointing, and sometimes people are disappointing. And I think we need to come in and speak with each other so that we can understand where that, where that's coming from. You know, go back to the basic human decency and anyway, it makes a the Constitution is incredibly important, but it's a very slippery slope. And the things that protect certain things are also the things that allow some very offensive, offensive things to occur. And I think it's, that's one of the disappointing parts of it. But, you know, if you don't let people speak their mind, then nobody will end up being able to speak their mind, regardless of how, how inappropriate or offensive or disappointing it is. And so I like the fact that we may be able to look into other recourse to, to solve that problem so that we don't have to worry about that anymore, because nobody needs to look at certain things. So. Yeah, it's difficult to start talking and then try and put the brakes on what you want to say, because it's a public meeting. So that's all, that's all I'll end with. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyle.
Good evening, everyone. And yeah, it's great to see everybody out here. A lot of new faces and stuff. I won't just piggyback, but I appreciate Emily coming out and speaking, and Bill, you as well. I need to bring, you know, two sides of the story, and obviously, I just hope we can come to a resolution. I know it's not always easy for people to get up and speak their mind, and then I also know what it's like to have an opinion and feel strongly about something. And hopefully, we can just meet somewhere in the middle on that. The only other thing I've got for tonight is directed towards one specific citizen, Al Philla. I'm going to point you out. He asked last meeting about CTRAN and the lack of service that has been provided by them. I spoke with Sean Donaghy from, he's the CEO of CTRAN, and he gave me a little bit of insight, and they're now just doing the current here in town. He's, I'm going to work with Maria to try and get them in here to set up a presentation to explain how those services work a little bit better. But he did tell me that since 2019, since they had changed their services, that ridership has gone up 30%. And the current works on a on-call or app-based usage and kind of works similarly to like an Uber. So there's, they can pick you up right at your house, but they will be here to explain that more in depth. But thank you for bringing that up, Al, and that's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Strubbin.
Yeah. Bronson, thanks for the presentation. Some of those words that you had to present definitely are what people want to hear. But those same words are what give people But those same words are what give people access to all sorts of privileges that other countries in the world don't get, right? For you to be able to get up here and speak and tell us, you know, about what, what is going on in our community and making people aware. You can't do that in a lot of other countries. They just won't allow it. So it's, it's something, you know, that none of us up here agree with, right? But it is a right. And this is something that has also come up before the council three years ago. You know, along with ribbons and such on the, on the bridge. And it was also brought up that there would be Nazis handing out flyers and, and sandwich boards at the bridge as well. Right? Being somebody that knew people in concentration camps and watched them pass away in front of their eyes and such. It's near and dear to at least my heart, right? But as a person in this country and in this, uh, community, I, I can choose to ignore it. And the other thing I can choose to do is educate people around me what that stuff means, including my children. So this way, when they get to be in their 50s or 60s and have problems against cities or other people, they're not displaying stuff like that to get their point across. Right? So I, I do want to thank you for standing up and, and telling us what was going on. And the gentleman coming to speak about his father. It is appreciated. So like they all said, hopefully this will come to a resolution. Did we ever talk about the Easter egg hunt? Oh, we did? Okay. Then I don't even have to repeat that. Sorry. I get a little emotional when I hear stuff like that. I, I think that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Brings us to staff reports. Pacific Highway Shared Use Path Project and Mr. Tony Cooper will present. Welcome.
Thank you, City Council Mayor Protown. My name is Tony Cooper. I'm the City Engineer from the center. And this is a request, uh, for council to authorize, um, the approval of an agreement for the Pacific Highway Shared Use Path. And I'm going to go into a little depth about the background of this. So in 2021, um, the city received a, uh, grant from RTC, Regional Transportation Commission for a transportation alternative, grant, which is, it's kind of, there's different ways to do that, but a path is one of them, an alternate way of travel. So, um, that requires, it's a federal grant and so it requires 13 and a half percent match. And, uh, it, uh, it really is going to, it's going to consist of a 10-foot wide path between Larson Drive and the sidewalk that is, was just built for K's subdivision. So it's about 1,600 lineal feet and it's a 10-foot wide, it's going to be a 10-foot wide paved path. So, um, the city received a grant for $200,000 for that. With the 13 and a half percent match, that's, that's $34,000. So, um, I just want to say that, uh, with this type of grant, it needs to follow federal guidelines, FHWA. And most cities in, uh, the state of Washington have to, uh, are required to, um, have that reviewed by WashDOT. They're, they act as the contract administrators for administration for FHWA. So anything that, uh, for approval of anything with that grant process has to go through the local programs office in Vancouver, the WashDOT. Uh, so that being said, um, we, uh, we had to go through agreements with WashDOT, a called local agency agreements. It's, it's a long process. So even though the, the city received this money, the, the appropriation of money in 2021 from RTC, we weren't able to get actually the authorization or obligation for that money to, until March of 2022, before we were able to get that local agency agreement approved by WashDOT headquarters office. Local programs. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, but by that time, we actually have the money obligated. So WashDOT authorized that money to be obligated and the city can use it. So, um, in, um, I think in May and June of 2022, the city advertised in the Columbia in a request for qualifications for to find qualified consultants to design this. And on, uh, June 15th, there were two proposals that were received, one from Wallace Engineering and one from HHPR. The city, uh, conducted a, an evaluation based on the criteria in that RFQ and found that Wallace Engineering was most qualified based on their proposal, their proposals. So the city started negotiation process with Wallace Engineering. Met with them out on site, uh, talked to them a lot about the pro, about what was required. And so on November of 2022, we finally received a proposal and a cost from them. They estimated that it would cost $541,000 for them to design this path. And so we told them, well, this is way above our budget. We can't continue negotiating with you. We told them that. We had to send a letter to them to end negotiation. So the next part of the process is actually contact the next consultant, which was HHPR. Uh, we met with them on site and, uh, went through that process with them and, uh, asking for a proposal. And on March of, March 4th of this year, we finally received a proposal in the amount of $268,098 for the design review, reviewed the proposal. It meets the intent of the grant and what, what is proposed for the design. And so now, um, we have to go through a WashDOT standard consultant agreement to get that approval, uh, for, or to sign a contract with them. So that's where we are now. We're in the process of preparing that agreement and need authorization from city council to actually, uh, have that agreement signed. So in summary, the proposal for, uh, shared use path is $268,098. That's what the HHPR, um, proposed in their design. And so we're receiving $200,000 in grant. There's the $34,000 match by federal requirements. And then so, uh, there's additional 30, a little over $34,000 that is necessary to, um, meet that, uh, cost for the design. So currently in the capital, uh, in our capital program budget, there is, uh, $233,000 budgeted. And of course, $200,000 in grant, $33,000 additional money for that, uh, for the match. And then it'll be an additional little over $35,000 to, that the city will have to pay to, um, get that design funded. So, um, there is enough money in, in our budget, this year's budget to, um, pay for that, but, um, it depends on whether or not all the other projects come under budget or not. So there may or may not have to be a budget amendment for that. So I did include in, in the package, I did include a schematic drawing that shows kind of the length of this, and it shows some pictures in there that, um, of, of some of the areas along that to kind of show you what is there now and why there needs to really be a path, because there's no way to walk along there safely. So the, the proposal by HHPR is included. And that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
I, I actually do, Tony. Um, I totally agree. It is, it's a very dangerous area. It does need this. Are we coming in under budget on the community center or anything? I'm trying to remember.
We, so far, that one was a hair over budget. And then we also had the emergency culvert project. So, um, there's a couple of projects that may or may not happen this year. For example, the junction sign, we think it's budgeted $150,000. So if we don't complete that, that money is then available in the capital budget for other projects. But, um, you know, so far it's looking like maybe a budget amendment, but, um, you know, just things are coming in a hair higher than either grant funds or budget.
And this can even come in a little bit hair higher too, right? I mean, this, the 268 may not be the final at that. So.
Well, this would be a not to exceed contract.
Okay.
Yeah.
Unless there's something unforeseen, additional things that we're not aware of that during design.
Well, this is, this is just for the design costs.
This is just for the design. And then we have, once it's designed, then we have a little bit more leverage to go after grants for construction.
And Tony's actually prepared a, a grant for construction that's, uh, going out here in a couple of days. But, you know, it's generally a little bit, uh, sooner than we typically apply for that grant. But, um, it, it's a grant that would fit this project pretty well. And there's a very limited pool of applicants for that pool of money. So we figured it was worth a shot anyway.
I mean, the only reason I think that it's kind of a no brainer at this point is because compared to the other Willis or whatever their, that contractor was, I mean, with their.
Wallace, yeah.
Wallace, sorry. For their proposal, I mean, the cost is significantly less and things only get more expensive as we wait on them.
Right?
So.
And then human life, right?
Yeah.
Safety is a huge thing.
Extremely dangerous area, right? And is a sign more important than that safety?
There are other projects we can jump off.
So I, I guess my question would be, those developments along that, that corridor there, what, what percentage are those occupied right now?
So the, uh, stretch of Pacific Highway that this path will go on is, um, not currently under development. If in sometime in the future, development were to occur, they would have to make, you know, roadway improvements that would include this path. But this path also crosses, um, I'm not sure if it's even a named creek.
Jenny Creek.
Okay. Um, and there's a pretty severe ravine that goes through there that probably would never really be developed. So, um, you know, really we've looked at this a lot of different ways and tried to figure out the best and most cost effective way to do the project. And really we've also tried to minimize the amount of, you know, we'll call it throwaway work that, you know, if development happens in the future that this, that would get replaced. So, um, this is something I think that's been discussed for quite a few years here and through the, the planning commission. I think there's been some public comment to them, you know, over the past four or five years, that this is a really important key piece of infrastructure. It's also kind of a larger piece of the overall Pacific Highway widening that Mr. Swanson's been talking about lobbying to get, you know, design funds for. So, you know, for safety and pedestrian mobility and being able to get those folks that are in those new developments, um, to the downtown area, you know, on foot. Instead of just via car.
Can you go back to the map?
Sure.
So that, uh, Larson Drive, where it says Riverside Estates, that is, those are not developed yet?
Though, that's phase two of Riverside, our favorite project. So they're starting to build out right now, um, in Larson Drive.
Where's that park from?
It would be sort of to the.
600 yards to the north.
Yeah, off the screen, so to the northeast.
Yes, to the.
Northwest, excuse me.
Just past a couple of parks.
Okay.
It's getting on this map.
The, uh, but that's where the entrance to the existing neighborhood and the apartment complex.
Yeah. So this was, there's continuous sidewalks sort of north and west of this that connects to that park and the apartments and the rest of Riverside. So we're kind of basically connecting the dots from, from Riverside down to the K's subdivision.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this can be a ludicrous idea. Um, we did a latecomers agreement for the sewer line. Is there a way to do like a latecomers agreement to the people for development that they can help pay us back some of that $200,000 or is that illegal? I, I, that's why I said it was a ludicrous statement, you know?
Unfortunately, I think the path isn't parallel in any kind, any development. It's just connecting those dots between Larson, which is all of the Riverside on the other side. But, uh, you know, as development occurs, if it does occur that direction, the developer would have to widen, you know, the street, do street improvements and then connect into that path. So, um, it, it wouldn't, this is going to be an asphalt path. They would be required to install curb and gutter and sidewalk. So they'd have to somehow connect into that. So this is really just a path to get people to wait or, or be safely right now.
I was just trying to conserve some money.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's expensive, but I, I don't know that we can afford not to.
No, we can't.
With the amount of people that are.
I agree.
And, and it's going to keep expanding that direction anyways. So we're, they're not making any more dirt. So growth is going to happen that way.
Any other questions from council?
I've moved to authorize the design contract with HHRP Incorporated in the amount of $268,000 and, well, gosh, I screw this up every time. Two six, $268,098.
I needed two seconds.
Right. We have a motion and a second. Authorizing the design contract with HHPR Inc. in the amount of $268,098. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Thank you, council. Thank you, Tony.
For the information.
Brian, can we get a, a update or a list of the projects of where they're at? You know, that we had on the budget for this year at some point?
Oh, sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll put that in my next staff report.
Thank you.
Next we have administrative services staff report and Ms. Maria Swinger Inskeep will present the administrative services staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Protown and council. Just a few things for me tonight. The February sales tax was $56,594, which was down slightly over 2022. The gambling tax came in consistent with where it was last month. So that's always good to see. And then we were able to give John Anderson from the governor's office a tour of the city last month. It's always great when we can get people to come out and see our beautiful city. Desi attended a local seminar put on by Washington Festivals and Events Association, their Southwest chapter. And then she also attended Public Records Act training, which was sponsored by MRSD. So many public records act trainings we have to go through. And then last week I attended the Washington Municipal Clerks Conference in Stevenson. And I just wanted to take a second to thank the mayor and council who approve a budget for us to be able to continue our training and get educated because it's so important. And then lastly, we have a reminder that anyone that is receiving the low income discount must furnish to my department by the end of May, their 2022 proof of taxable income. If the documentation is not received by the deadline, charges for sewer and stormwater services will be set back to the regular rates. And if anyone has questions, they can contact Desi. And, and just a reminder that we did change those, uh, the guidelines. So it's based on number of people in the household now and also the, the income changed. So if there are no questions, then we will turn it over to senior accountant Riley Barbera to do our 2022 financial presentation.
With the low income thing, can that be put in the newsletter as well? Is there, maybe it already is?
Yeah, it, it, it's on your bill and there's a reminder. And it was actually in our December newsletter as well, but yes.
Cool. Thank you.
And we also try to follow up with everybody who hasn't turned them in.
Or the reader board? Put it on the reader board or something?
Yes, Alex Reader Board. Alex is a reader board guy. So he does a great job.
When's your birthday, Maria? Let's get that up there.
Thank you. Okay, Riley Barbera, you're up.
All right. 2022 annual financial report. These numbers are pretty solid, but I don't actively turn anything into the state. I'll make sure it first. So there could be some slight adjustments between here and there. But overall, this is probably pretty close to what exactly. So this is pretty similar format to all the quarterly ones that I've done, but I don't have to make any guesses as to how it didn't start to happen. It's actually what happened. So the 2021 actual.
There, that finished?
All right. So we have the 2021 actuals in there for comparison as well as the 2022 budget. And then just stop me at any time if you have any questions, need any clarifications. And just as a reminder, I'm an accountant and not an economist or a fortune teller. So we don't always hit the budget. Uh, we do our best. So starting off with the general fund, uh, all our tax revenues came in really strongly last year. We beat our expectations, I suppose you would call them, uh, just about every single category. Notably, the gambling taxes, the card room revenue, those are obviously not where they once were, but they're definitely starting to come back from the lows of COVID. Down into the other revenues, uh, as I mentioned in all of my quarterly reports, uh, throughout last year, construction wasn't exactly as we had planned hopes. Some things were moving a little slower. Uh, so that licenses and permits was quite a bit lower than we had kind of anticipated. The grants, the big portion of that was the ARPA money, uh, 475,000. That'll be, I guess it'll show up in my prior year one for next year, but that's the last time we're going to actually see that money coming in. The state shared one you see is a little bit less than last year and a bit less than our expectations. A big portion of that is the city assistance. Uh, we got about $56,000 for that last. A big portion of that is the city assistance. We got about $56,000 for that last year, which we were not eligible for. Or, yeah, 2021 was last time we got it. We're not eligible in 2022. And then there's this retainage deposit down at the bottom, and I don't think that's shown up in any of my reports. What that was is Riverside, yep, Riverside Estates. They gave us this $97,000 for future maintenance that might be needed. And if that maintenance is not needed over the next two years, it gets refunded to them. Riley, did you actually have to put in the money that we've received for COVID? Is that in this? You were in the.
Yeah.
Sorry, I choked on my own saliva. That candy cane I was munching on.
Yes, that was, that is in the grant.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, and then going on to the departments, and all these departments are still part of the same fund, general fund. So starting out with finance, you're going to see this on pretty much everywhere where there are salaries and benefits that our salary and benefit ratio wasn't quite as we expected. I've found this a lot more difficult to guess how it's actually going to turn out than I had originally anticipated. There's a lot of things that go into it based on, you know, who we actually hire versus who we think we're going to hire. You know, so people with higher salaries versus lower salaries, even if we're paying the safe health insurance, they're going to have much different benefit ratios. If you cash out your vacation, or if you know you're sick for a long period of time, you might pay less than L and I, but you might still have the same salary. So there's a whole lot of different things that go into that. Overall, I think we had estimated about a 39% benefit, the salary ratio, and then the actual was about 31, 32%. Just a little note on that, so nobody has to think about it and ask every department that comes up. In the past, you guys had asked for a bit more detail on the services line for this one. So these are the bigger categories that I could pull out. I guess I should point out that the IT one, that's not just our IT contract, that also goes to things like website, a few other things as well.
Could you comment on legal? How under budgeted is?
So yeah, illegal is, that's okay.
I just did.
We've been short切了.
Thank you, Riley.
Onto the legislative. I didn't really have any notes on that because look how close it were to the actual. It's slightly over, but overall, pretty dang close. That's because of Riverside Estates. And that capital that's in there that wasn't the budget, that's AV equipment, that's all this stuff that makes these meetings happen. All right, the Municipal Court Department. The vast majority of this is just our payments to the bound ground municipal court for providing our court services. So those were $77,000 in 2021 and about $125,000 in 2022. There's a few other small categories in this as well, but there's no bodies of ours in this department. All right, onto the Police Department, the one that gets the most work in the budgeting side. And of course, as we all know, we budget to have a fully staffed police department. We are still getting that whole situation figured out, how it's going to go, so we did not obviously spend all of that money.
If we did, I'd be concerned.
Right, and so that will come out in a bunch of different ways. One of those is our services. Some of those things are a lot higher than we had budgeted, even though we're lower in total. That's because we're not paying for some of those hiring costs, but we are paying for more of the outside police contracts, things like that. I think this was asked in the previous ones, we spent $31,000, was given the city of Richfield, and $36,000 to the city of Washougal. That went into the services line in the Police Department there. Didn't buy the two police cars, so there was no transfers out of that $170,000. Onto the Planning and Community Development Department. This one, there were some changes. I was actually looking at my staffing summary that I had made in prep for the 2022 budget. And the roster as of December 31st was quite a bit different. But overall, not too bad on the net difference there. Our services, we were a bit under because we didn't need as much planning services, you know, so we didn't get as much revenue. Wouldn't have as many expenses there either. What services are, what are those services that are costing? The biggest ones are planner. I think that was one of the larger ones, the building inspector as well. Looks like you want to reject there.
No, I think that covers it. It's just to clarify, though, it's our, it's a plans examiner, and then he also helps fill in for our building official when he's out or on vacation or sick.
Public Works, split into two different parts, parts, Public Works Operations and Parks. Let's see here. So one of the things that had come up, and I was always kind of questioning why, was the services. We are quite a bit under our budget. The biggest area of the difference in that is there's $70,000 that was budgeted for street maintenance. And I think the actual spent was about $30,000. And so I look back at the past couple of years before that, it had been the same $70,000 budgeted for the last three years in a row. There was $12,000 spent in 2021 and $9,000 spent in 2020. So my understanding is that's budgeted in case something big comes up, something like.
You did.
Over there that happened this year. I think that was actually a stormwater issue though, so that ended up in the stormwater budget. So that is often budgeted much higher than we anticipate the regular day to day maintenance, just in case something big happens. So there was definitely more work done la- last year compared to prior years, but still under what was potentially needed, I guess you would say.
And just to tag on to that, I think this, in this year's budget, we increased that to $100,000 if I recall correctly. And the goal is to use that all this year on preventative maintenance. So that's a program that Amy and I are working on kicking off right now.
All righty. Not much to say on Parks. It's still fairly close there. So then we got the look at the general fund combined totals, everything on one. And I really couldn't put any notes at the bottom, so it didn't have a whole lot in there. But overall, there was about a $1.4 million surplus. So yeah, overall, our general fund was looking fairly strong last year. But you know, there's going to be a big shakeup in how the expenses really is committed. We're not getting that our fund money anymore. And presumably, we'll be paying more money for policing services in the future. All right, moving on to our reserve fund. One of the things that's still on my list is kind of rewriting all of our reserve policies. But as it stands now, we want to have one years of general fund expenses in our reserves. So if you look at our actual expenses, we have more than that. If you look at our budgeted expenses, we have less than that. But we haven't had to dip into it. We've still got a pretty healthy reserve balance in there. And we've been working on how to invest those dollars, so they're starting to get some better interest and dividends in there as well. Onto the impact fees. As I mentioned in all my quarterly reports, I've already brought up again, traffic, or not traffic. Construction did not quite hit the levels that we had sort of hoped for, and so that resulted in a lot lower impact fees all around traffic parks and schools. We didn't get all of these projects done as well. You see that $233,000 for the shared use path. As Tony brought up in his thing, there's always kind of something that comes up with all these projects. So even if we want to get them done one year, sometimes they get pushed along to the next year. That Riverside Park purchase, that wasn't, or that's not a purchase. The purchase is above that. That was about on budget. The Riverside Park that's in there, that was a refund of interest credits to a developer in exchange for their work on a park. And then another note on here was the La Center Road paving reconstruction project. That was originally in the impact fees fund, but as we realized that that wasn't actually eligible. So that was paid out of the capital projects fund. It was also quite a bit of a scope expansion on what that project was. It was more of a $600,000 versus a $200,000 thing. That being said, we got about $475,000 as a reimbursement from the PUD there. So real estate tax, excess tax, the rate at the top there came in a little bit under budget. I don't know if interest rates have anything to do with that, but I wouldn't necessarily be wanting to buy real estate right now or towards the end of last year either. So a lot of these brand income dollars that didn't hit their budget, that was, they would have been tied to capital projects that didn't necessarily get done. I didn't put a note on every single one of these. If you have any questions, I'll refer that to Brian. I'm not the guy that's in charge of the capital projects. I just look at the money. Anything to questions, comments here? Move right along then. All right, Vehicle Improvement Fund, there were three things slated for this fund last year. A vehicle for the Parks or Public Works Department and two for the Police Department. Since we didn't get those police vehicles, we didn't transfer that money in. We're still working on the policy of how this should be funded in the future rather than an as needed basis for cars. Still getting that done, but overall, it's got a pretty small balance in that fund. Onto our Sewer Operations Fund, a little bit over the expected sewer fees. Bio solids was a little bit down. I think we're doing one of the two people who we process our bio solids for. And pretty much under budget and just about everything on the expenditure side. I guess I did a budget amendment, that's why. Of course, we're going to be under budget. The Sewer Capital Fund, this one is just funded by transfers from the Sewer Operations Fund. This goes for the big projects. That sewer membrane project is a real big one that we got done last year, and that came in a decent bit under budget. And you're going to be seeing this La Center School District Pump Station for about five years. That's, I think, last year was the first of five annual payments of that $115,000. Onto the Sewer Debt Service Fund, this is paying back the Public Works Trust Fund loan. It's funded by the capital charges that are somewhat similar to impact fees and that they're charged based on new construction type of things. We didn't get as many in last year, still construction, but looking at 2023, I think we've already either gotten close to or already gotten ahead of what we received in these capital facilities charges and impact fees just in January, February this year compared to all of last year. So things are starting to pick up. Maybe these things were just kind of, had started the process of all these construction projects and are now just getting their fees paid or just getting approved. I don't exactly know how all that stuff quite flows through together, but. Is that pretty accurate, Ryan?
Yeah, I think really it was.
Difference there.
It was a fact that for a lot of the building year, you know, when homes are being constructed in the summer, we were at a lots, basically. There was several projects like Highland Terrace that were almost done, but they hadn't platted, so you couldn't actually build there yet. And they, you know, those projects, basically their lots freed up sort of in the winter. So now we're starting to see all the building activity on those lots.
Thank you. And so the payments coming out of this is the debt service payment on that loan. We're down to about $1.5 million, a variable $10 million loan. Final payout will be in July of 2028. And then finally, the Stormwater Utility Fund. Slightly under the $240,000 of the budgeted revenue there. And a little lower in all of our, I guess we didn't have all these projects. None of them got completed. The stormwater vehicle that was actually supposed to be a sewer vehicle, so the purchase was made from that fund instead. And this illicit connection investigation and correction, that project is slated for 2023. And that's what I got. Thank you, Riley.
Questions from council? As always, Riley, excellent report. Thank you very much. Takes us to the Police Staff Report, and Chief Richardson will present.
Thank you, council. It's getting late, so I'll try to shorten up my presentation for you. So this is a report for February 2023, and we had four crimes reported, four total offenses, four total crime reports reported in February 23, which is down from 12 cases that were reported in 2022. Of the four cases, one was a pornography case, and this was a juvenile who shared pictures online with somebody that they didn't know, and obviously that happens quite a bit nowadays. And we took that information to the cybercrime unit at Vancouver, and there's no way to trace it back to the person whose photos were actually sent to. So the case has kind of died. We really don't have any leads, but it's just one of those things to let your teenagers know you've got to be very cautious with all these online chat programs and stuff and be careful how you share information and what you share. And we had one auto theft and two recovered stolen vehicles. This is an interesting case. If you remember back in 2021, we had approximately 18 to 20 auto thefts. And we, we knew who was doing those thefts back then because we had seen him in several of the vehicles. And for some reason, he disappeared in 2022. He lives outside the city and the county. So we only had two auto thefts last year, one of which was actually our late report from like 2014 or 2015. Well, he's back in town again. The first part of the month, he stole two cars in one day. He, we got a report of a car that was doing donuts underneath the bridge, and by the time the officers got there, he had abandoned the car. It was a Honda, but we had a witness there that watched this, and so we were able to use the witness to identify the same suspect. He's local, everybody knows. And so the officers then went looking for the suspect, and they saw him driving another unreported stolen that was ultimately taken from the Phoenix Casino. Obviously, we turn on our lights, he takes off. By law, we can't chase him, and so he was gone. And luckily, the Sheriff's Department ultimately arrested him either that day or the next day. And I believe he's still in county jail, so we haven't had any auto thefts in the next, the last couple of days. That's, that's the good news. Both cars he stole were Hondas, so if anybody needs steering wheel locks, we still have those.
Yeah, you own a Honda, you need a.
So that's, that's just kind of the idea of how crime happens in a small town and it's generally, you know, it's a repeat offenders. And how much, even though you hear the state legislators all the time that say property crimes aren't violent, they don't hurt people, that they do impact people's quality of life, and especially if you remember a couple of years ago, we had two cars that were stolen twice. So you imagine going out to work twice in a month and your car's gone and you have to, you know, deal with that. So that's it. Calls for service were down a little bit in February 22, 2023 from 2022. And they were actually evenly split. I believe they were about 54 each versus community activity and officer activity. And so I'm going to get away from the report. The data's in there. I wanted to update you on the Ridgefield study.
Real quick before.
Yes, sir.
Chief, can we go, because I know that can get to be a long topic. Do you have any updates on the laws and legislation up there?
Yes.
Pursuits and stuff?
I do. It's a, it's a very tough year again for the police, and I do monitor WASP, I listen to the hearings. Right now, my understanding is a bill that came out of the Senate that would change pursuits from probable cause to reasonable suspicion, which is good. That's good for us, and it added some additional crimes against persons that you can chase people for. It, it did do, there are some very heavy restrictions on supervisory control, which will impact small cities that don't have supervisors on duty. What might more than likely happen, these small cities that don't have a supervisor on duty, you just won't pursue in the middle of the night. With that being said, they did not add property crimes or auto theft of vehicles, so we still can't chase them. The other one of concern that I don't know if it's, anytime I say bills died, apparently when bills die in the legislature, they don't really die, they can come back. Was there, there is currently, there was a bill that would prohibit us from making car stops for anything other than moving violations. So suspended licenses, no license, equipment that doesn't work, if you had a misdemeanor warrant, all kinds of things like that. If we saw you driving down the street, we couldn't stop you. And that one apparently, my understanding, died, but then there was talk about merging the two bills together, the stolen, the pursuit bill. And this bill, basically allowing that people to say, hey, we're going to give you the pursuit bill, but we're going to add this on to it, which, you know, isn't a good win for law enforcement. There was one, I just listened to the hearing yesterday, and you have to be careful when you look at these bills, you go, oh, that's a good idea. So there was one yesterday, it would, which makes sense. It was the civil, changing the civil service rules for police officers and emergency responders. It would, which makes sense. It was the civil, changing the civil service rules for police officers and emergency responders, which would allow you if you had a civil service exam for a police officer, right now you have to be a US citizen. And what they want to do is change a lot. It says not only you, you can be a US citizen or you can have the legal status to work in the United States. So that would have more applicants that we could hire from. As long as if that person was from outside the country, we could do a background on them. So somebody from France or England or something like that would be pretty easy, but if they're from North Korea, probably not really easy to do a background, right? The only thing is that they put in the bill that they wanted to take out the requirement that you had to read and write in English. So for police officers, if you can't read the laws or you can't write a police report in English, we were, we were thinking, well, how can you, how can that even be? I mean, we'd have to translate everything 50 times, training a police report writing, the books we use, like the penal code, those kinds of things. So that one, I believe came out of hearing as a positive vote, but it still needs some tweaking because there were, and that's the part that the chiefs want to tweak. We're for what we said, instead of, instead of removing the requirement that you have to read and write English, keep that in there, but incentivize people that can, that can speak in two languages, write two languages, that kind of thing, make, give them priority over other people that are coming from outside the country. So that's kind of what we're all working on right now. So those are the kinds of things that are going on every day up there.
Right. I just didn't know if any of them fully passed yet.
Not yet. And then, you know, obviously have to do, once they get out of their committees and they get in, we just have to get to the governor and have him sign them. So that's what we're waiting for. So there's some, there's some positive and there's some negative in there.
So just a note for residents and such like that, if you're for any of these laws or any of that, please write your representatives and your state senators urging them to vote in favor.
Yeah, and that's what I.
It does make a difference. They do pay attention to that.
And if you get on the state of Washington's legislative page, you can read the bills, you can listen to the hearings and you can actually either make comments for the record or actually testify. And it's, it's pretty simple, but I always comment on anything that's got to do with leasing to our local representatives to make sure that, and I generally comment the way WASPAC is leaning towards things, but sometimes I have my own comments. And so is that.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Okay. And then obviously last is the Ridgefield study. I know Burke was down here about two weeks ago. Met with the city manager at Ridgefield and the police chief. They've got a little bit more work to do, but there should be a draft report coming out shortly. So that is in progress. It's still moving along. In addition to that, Jeff Swanson, myself, the city manager of Ridgefield, now their police chief and sheriff are all going to meet on March 28 in Ridgefield. And we're going to have a, a conversation also about the current status of policing in North County, but also the future. So we're all on the same page because we know that there's going to be more growth and we have to figure out how do we make this, all these pieces work. So that's in progress and, and we are moving forward.
How's the new police chief's demeanor towards taking or helping us out?
She's, she's positive. She's for it. She's got a lot on her plate. Right now they're in the process of, they have to set up a lieutenant's process because they have to hire her replacement. Battleground is doing a lieutenant's process because they have to, Kim Armstrong, if you know Kim Armstrong, she's retiring April 1st. So they're going to do a process for a lieutenant there. And then I've been invited back to Camus. They're doing a second recruitment for police chief because they didn't get the applicant they were looking for the first time. And then yeah, be on, yeah, be coming back to be on the panel to interview people. I don't need another job. And.
Thank you, Maria.
And then.
That was going to be my next, next question.
Yeah. And then Vancouver PD, they just did their process for, they have two assistant police chief positions they're trying to fill. So that's it.
I believe the Ridgefield's new chief has been with the community for.
Levered. Yeah, a long time. She started there. She grew, grew up there. She's a pleasure to work with, very positive.
Just saying, she's been active in the community for a long time.
She has.
Aware of the situation. So do we have a timetable on that at all? Any, any type of, I, I know you said it should be coming back real soon. Did they give you any type of?
I don't have a, a timetable for that. Their contract expires, I believe, June 1st or June 30th, and I know that it's not going to take that long. Because remember, once we get that draft report, people make comments, ultimately they, we all have to decide, the city of Ridgefield has to say, yeah, we're going to move forward. Council's on board, our council's on board, and then we have to give it to the attorneys and they have to work out the contract and those things. But we're moving forward as fast as possible. It is a conversation topic of, I know their city council, our city council, our community, their communities.
I'm just making sure we're not having another Riverside Estates going on.
No, no, no.
Any other questions? Thank you, chief. We have no ordinances, resolutions, and our public hearings come before us this evening. Any unfinished business?
So I've been asked several times and I know this isn't going to sound the greatest to some people, but is there any type of update that the public can get about the status of the mayor? I get asked constantly and I don't even know what's going on. So, you know, I don't.
Comments under new business.
What's that?
I have comments under new business. It's a good segue. I have a letter to read and Bronson will also be following that with some comments to lead us through the process. I, Greg Thornton, hereby resign as mayor of the city of La Center, Washington, effective immediately. I no longer feel I can fully perform the necessary duties and responsibilities, nor represent the city of La Center to the best of my abilities as your mayor at the highest level possible. I now wish to solely focus on my health and recovery. I would like to express my thanks and appreciation to each of the current and prior City of La Center council members with whom I have served, including Doug Boff, Dennis Hill, Randy Williams, Joe Valenzuela, John Stimmel, Justin Keeler, Tom Strobin, Melissa Fox, Casey Casper, Tom Boyle, and Liz Servini. I admire and respect your dedication to the community as we work together professionally to strengthen the city of La Center. I also wish to acknowledge my high regard and admiration for our outstanding city staff. Each of these individuals demonstrates the highest level of professionalism, commitment, and dedication the city of La Center has ever had. I greatly respect their talents and abilities and I'm extremely proud of the caliber of talent we now have representing the city. Maria Swingar Ensky MBA, the city of La Center's Director of Administrative Services, oversees and manages the day-to-day operations of the city with the expertise of her administration team consisting of Senior Accountant Riley Barbera CPA, Strategic Specialist Desi Allinger Nelson, Administrative Specialist Katrina Ugar. I just blew that one. Ugar Jivra. And I apologize, Katrina. And Administrative Specialist Alex Richter. Each of these individuals brings their own qualifications and expertise to the team, frequently serving as the first point of contact with the community. Brian Cass, the city's Public Works Director, P E M B A, brings his expertise to the city of La Center's community development, public works, and wastewater treatment teams. Brian demonstrates his deep understanding of municipal rules and regulations, R C Ws, transportation, safety, and building strong teams. In my view, Brian is leading a group of individuals who are the best in the area. Tony Cooper serves as the city's Assistant Public Works Director and City Engineer, having served the city exceptionally for many years. John Wilson oversees building inspections. Ethan Spoo is the La Center Consulting City Planner with W S P. And Jessica Nash, our exceptional permit technician. These individuals play key roles in many areas of municipal government, ranging from new growth, zoning, development, parks, streets, sidewalks, trails, and much more. I extend my thanks and respect to each of them for their dedication to the city, their hard work, and their perseverance through very busy and difficult times. Special thanks to the dedicated wastewater treatment team as well. Jay Faver, our new supervisor, brings a depth of knowledge and expertise to the city of La Center. Jay is another top-notch professional possessing excellent organization and management skills that will serve the city very well. Bill Birdwell, wastewater plant, has also served the city of La Center for many years and I am thankful for all he has done for the city, especially in this time of transition. Immense thanks and respect to our public work staff. These individuals are the ones responsible for making this community beautiful and safe no matter the season. Their hard work can be seen in our clean, safe streets and sidewalks, in addition to our beautifully manicured parks and trails. This team includes the talent of Public Works Supervisor Amy Roberts-Santestevan, Maintenance Lead Erin Wilkinson, and Maintenance Workers David Pettit, Joe Warren, Cade Ledwith, and Emery Oldham. We have the absolute best public works team in Southwest Washington. This is a group of individuals who truly take pride in their work, making this community one we are all proud to call home. I wish to extend my deep appreciation to the individuals that have served the community of La Center in voluntary committee roles, such as the Budget Advisory Committee, the Planning Commission, and the Civil Service Commission. These community members invest countless hours reviewing difficult regulatory and budget materials, assisting the city staff and council in their decision-making process. Jack Davis, DeeDee Suter, Steve Workman, Sharon Elkashari, Jeremy Smith, Dennis Hill, Dennis Nutrock, Justin Keeler, and Paul Jones have all demonstrated their desire to serve the city of La Center, freely providing their expertise to improve and strengthen the city. To those dedicated individuals who have and continue to serve the public by volunteering in many capacities from Meals on Wheels, the Lions Club, the American Legion, Our Day's Committee, Christmas Tree Lighting Committee, Farmer's Market, La Center Museum, La Center Schools, you are the heart of the community and greatly appreciated. Thank you all so very much. In addition, I wish to express my gratitude and appreciation for each of our contract consultants who have provided the city of La Center with exceptional expertise in each of their specific roles over the past eight years. Teresa Johnson provided the city with accounting and CPA expertise and the refinement and improvements to city procedures and policies for internal accounting and helped us through a very successful state audit. Bronson Potter, the city attorney, has reached, researched and guided the city of La Center staff, city council, and myself on extremely complex topics that have come before us. His expertise has been and will continue to be extremely beneficial to the city. Janice Corbin has assisted the city of La Center in navigating union negotiations, developing job descriptions, job postings, interviewing employee policies, procedures, and a code of conduct. This has been a very long and difficult process in order to bring the city of La Center into municipal human resources compliance. Bob Richardson, interim police chief, has been with us during a critical time of evaluating the police department and working with other agencies to provide staffing. I am truly thankful for the countless hours he has put in behind the scenes to continue to make sure that our citizens were informed and our community was protected. His expertise will serve the city well in the ongoing discussions with the city of Ridgefield for long-term police coverage. Lloyd Halverson has provided us with introductions and access to elected officials in both Olympia and Washington DC. I admire his wealth of experience, leadership, and wisdom. Jeff Swanson diligently worked with the city as we began assessing steps necessary to attract new business and opening the doors to improved communications between potential developers. Jeff continues to provide the city with successful state and federal funding for our large-scale infrastructure and development projects in addition to legislative lobbying. Most importantly, I wish to thank my wife Julie, who has supported my desire to serve the community with integrity from the very beginning. She understood and supported me throughout the arduous process of developing a professional team that equally shares my passion for providing outstanding quality for the betterment of those we serve. In closing, I wish to thank citizens of La Center. It has been an honor to represent you and serve the community. I now ask that you give Julie and I our privacy. Sincerely, Greg Thornton.
Greg, if you're listening, thoughts and prayers are going out to you.
Bronson, I'll turn it over to you.
So I'd like to address you on the process of filling the vacancy in the mayor's position. Before I do, I just want to say that I've been a municipal attorney for over 30 years and Mayor Thornton's been one of the finest individuals I've had the privilege of working with. And I'm going to miss his calm and steady demeanor and presence on the council. So the, you were just handed a sort of a detailed process to fill vacancy, but before we dive into that, I want to just lay out a couple, two sort of different paths that you can go down. One is the, the statute on filling a vacancy for Code City, which is what we are, specifically calls out that a vacancy in the office of mayor can be filled by an incumbent council member. So that's, that's one avenue that you could consider is just filling it from within the council. The other process is like what we've done in the past for filling council member positions with an announcement, an application period, evaluations, interviews, and selection. And that's sort of what this detailed process here lays out. So not for tonight, but at a future council meeting, you should, and most like our, our next meeting, think about which of those two paths or which avenue you, you want to pursue. Obviously, if you fill a position from within the council, then we'll need to fill the vacant council position. The person who fills the mayor position would run at the next general election that have municipal elections, so the next November. The, they would, if they were re-elected, they would just continue in their term of office. If somebody else was elected, then that person takes the office effective the date of the certification of the election. I think Councilmember Casper, I think that's what you did on November 28, the person would take the position. So I don't think tonight we need to go through line by line this process. I think you, you probably know it. You would direct staff how you want the process to proceed, which process you want us to.
Do we vote on that, I'm guessing? Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I was just waiting for that. Do we vote on which option and then we have to agree or? And that's what I'm guessing, right?
Yeah.
It's not just, yeah, we have to come to a consensus.
Yeah, well, a majority.
A majority.
Right.
Not tonight, though.
Not tonight. Yeah, it's important enough that I think we need to put it on the agenda, have you time to think about it before the meeting and we'll deal with it. So really, unless you have questions about the detail of the process, I think that that's about all that I really want to have to say about it tonight. And we can take the next step at the next meeting.
Any questions?
I could just sit here in shock. That was not what I was expecting.
All right. Have no other business to come before us. We will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn this evening's meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carried. Thank you, everyone.